Good evening, and thank you for joining us for our Town Hall meeting with the Las Cruces Police Department. My name is Dan Trujillo. I'm the Public Information Officer. Today is September 12th, 2024. I'm saying that for the TV audience out there who may be watching this later on. We have a good lineup of speakers for you today. It's a very important topic. We're going to start off with Chief Story. Then we're going to go on to Deputy Chief Eric Uranda, who's going to give our update on Operation Not in Vain. And then we have three other speakers who will be talking about some of the problems we have been seeing with drugs in Las Cruces. So at the very end of the, all the speakers will take questions. I believe all the speakers will be able to help answer their questions within their line. And as I said earlier, if you anticipate having a question toward the end, please gravitate toward the center. Sit near the center aisle. That way I can easily find you when I walk up and down the aisle with the microphone. But without further ado, here's Chief Jeremy Story.
Thank you, Dan. I'm not going to spend a lot of time up here tonight. I have some very good speakers that are going to give you information on this topic of fentanyl and methamphetamine. The reason we chose this topic for this Town Hall is because if there's any other, there's no other factor that I think has contributed the most to the issues that we're all experiencing. Whether that's crime, homelessness, a lot of the quality of life issues. If you could wave a magic wand and get rid of fentanyl, meth, and the addiction associated with it, you would see, you'd still see crime, you'd still see homelessness. But you would see a drastic reduction in those things. And so I think these three speakers that we have that are going to talk about are going to give you a very good overview. You're going to have a good understanding of some of the challenges with it, how it works. And then some of the things that are already happening in Donaña County to try to address it. But it is a big problem, and it's going to take a very coordinated and a lot of cooperation, coordinated effort with a lot of cooperation to even have a chance of being successful. I'm just going to give a quick update on crime stats year to date. Now, when it comes to violent crime, what I'm starting with here, so far year to date, the numbers are not great. We had an 18% reduction in violent crime last year, so from 22 to 23. But we've seen a pretty significant increase in violent crime year to date through August for 2024. For those that can't see it, we have 15 homicides to date. We had seven at this time last year. We have 45 rape cases. We had 35 last year, 46 robbery cases 50 the year before. And one of the, really what's driving the increase the most is aggravated assaults. And that includes in New Mexico, both aggravated assaults and aggravated battery. So that's pointing guns at people, threatening people with knives. And that's also shooting people and stabbing people, those types of crimes. Property crime looks a little better. Overall, we have a 5% reduction in property crime. We had a slight reduction, about a 2% reduction last year in property crime. The only categories where we have not seen a reduction are felony thefts and misdemeanor shopliftings. The felony thefts, by large measure, are also shoplifting related, so retail theft. And that's been one of the big concentrations of Operation Not in Vain is to really start to attack retail theft in Las Cruces and shopliftings. Year-to-date calls for service, we're at 104,295. That's basically one call for every resident in the Las Cruces almost year-to-date. That's through the end of August. We're at 2,809 arrests, 406 are felony arrests, 2,072 that are misdemeanor arrests. And year-to-date, 10,320 traffic citations. Some good news and some things that are coming up. Park Rangers, the goal still is to have our park rangers hired and start their training in January of 2025. We'll have three of them, and part of their job will be to make our parks safer so that people can use them, families can use them. People can use them for recreation and what they're really intended for. And so they're not going to solve the entire problem, but they're going to be a part of the solution. Our real-time crime center update, we're still on track for early 2025. We have some construction delays just trying to get the bids. We need to make it happen. We finally have some traction getting the electrical plans that we need to basically do everything else. But I'm hopeful that we'll have the software and all the infrastructure up and running by January 2025. And we'll have our employees hired and the actual center at the police department up and running within a month or two of that. And the last thing I'll mention is that we are currently recruiting for our next academy. Applications are open through December 2nd. This is a very important academy for us. We're at 183 officers right now out of 220. We have to get closer to 220 to really carry out the plans and do the things that we want to do. So if you know somebody who you think would be a good police officer, qualified applicant, please have them apply. We have a great department with a lot of opportunity, a lot of opportunity that other police departments don't have. We're kind of the right size, where we're not too big, we're not too small. We have a lot of specialty sections, so there's a lot of room for growth throughout your career. Join lascreucespd.com. We'll take you to the recruiting page where there's a lot of information. You can also apply. At this time, I'm going to call up Deputy Chief Eric Uranda to just quickly go over the stats so far with Operation Not in Vain.
Thank you, Chief Story, for your time, and I thank everybody for being here today. For my presentation, I'm just going to give you a brief overview of Operation Not in Vain and where we stand with it right now. For those who are unaware of what exactly Operation Not in Vain is, it's a combined joint effort between the Las Cruces Police Department and numerous local, state, and federal agencies who are working together to reduce the property and violent crime that Chief Story just discussed in an effort to take back our city. Operation Not in Vain is a, for those who aren't aware of it, it's again, it's a combined effort by everybody involved. And February 11th, 2024, the loss of our brother Jonah Hernandez and along with the increasing property and violent count throughout the city and many variables that we cannot control that affect our ability to reduce crime within the city have made 2024 the worst year for our department. There's no lack of better words for that. It is the worst year for the Las Cruces Police Department. But I can promise you, we're not going to give up. We're going to continue to try. And this operation, with the help that we're receiving from all the numerous agencies and the dedication and commitment from our officers, we're able to do things that we have not been able to do recently at least. The operation focuses on having and attacking various variables to, again, bring back our city to the way it should be, a good place to live and reside in. And what it does is, every time we have the operation working, we have a team that is dedicated, focusing on various components. We have a team that is focused on going out there, searching and apprehending violent criminals within our city that have outstanding warrants. We have groups that are out there focusing on traffic enforcement. So all the complaints we receive are citizens or businesses that say there's traffic issues, speeders, so forth in certain areas. Or if our traffic studies have shown that certain areas are prone to being areas where there are a lot of crashes, we have a team that is focused on addressing that as well. We have other teams that are focused on our frequent offenders. And when I say this is, the teams are focused on either, one, finding those frequent offenders that are continuously going through the system, offering services that we can provide to help them with potential drug addiction or mental illness. And if neither is working, obviously, they're continuously committing crime, taking law enforcement action. We also have a team that is focused on addressing the hotspots throughout our city that are being plagued higher than other parts in the city with the violent and property crime. And these states are just various states and hours from now through November that are based on intelligence-led, the timeframes and days of the week that are affected by most. Here's a quick overview on the stats so far for only August. We have over 144 positive contact with businesses and 270 positive contacts with residents. Another team that I didn't mention is the community advocates are helping us tremendously with this project by going out there and reaching out to the businesses or residents that have been recently burglarized or have had their businesses vandalized in an effort to do a risk assessment in hopes that we can provide suggestions or tips on how to better protect themselves and work with us to prevent becoming victims again. The advocates are also offering potential funding resources to businesses who have been, received criminal damage to property for their business and whenever they were victims. Our traffic enforcement team has done over 300 traffic citations. We've recovered at least 12 stolen vehicles. This is all only in August, and it's not working every day in August. Again, it's various days in August, so it can range anywhere from as little as two days to as much as five days. We've had nine seized or recovered firearms, 38 criminal citations have been issued, 50 misdemeanor arrests have been made, and 77 felony arrests have been made. Two key ones that I like to focus on is a seizure of over 2,000 fentanyl pills or close to 2,000 fentanyl pills and over 50 pounds of meth. All these efforts is not just Las Cruces Police Department alone. We've received tremendous amount of help from all the agencies you see up here, ranging from New Mexico State Police, our metro agency, and also everyone else listed up here. And I'll be available once all the presentations are done to answer any questions you may have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Eric Uranda. Next, our speaker will be Athena Huckabee. Athena is a public health professional here in Las Cruces. She has quite a resume. I found it online and I looked it over, but I'm going to leave it to a public health professional. And she has an overview of the fentanyl crisis that we're facing here in Las Cruces.
Great. Good evening. Thanks, everyone. I'm happy to have been invited. Thank you so much. Actually, what I'm going to talk about, I think the speaker after me is going to sort of cover the fentanyl problem. I'm maybe jumping ahead and going to cover what the treatment landscape looks like for fentanyl and the challenges in treating it. So just to kind of situate us, I'm sure everyone here is aware that we're in the middle of an opioid overdose death epidemic. We're in what they call the fourth wave of this. The first wave started in 1996 when Oxycontin was FDA-approved for the treatment of chronic non-cancer pain. Prior to that, opioids had not been FDA-approved to treat anything but acute or post-surgical pain. We saw pretty quickly a rise in prescription opioid overdose deaths. And then the second wave starts in around 2010, when we finally get a grip that this is happening and that prescriptions are driving the deaths. Patients are then taken off painkillers without appropriate treatment or tapers. And at the same time, the drug cartels realize that they have markets in places they had not had markets before. Historically, it was very difficult to get heroin in somewhere like Omaha, Nebraska, right? But with people being inappropriately taken off their painkillers, they were desperate and then switched to heroin. That started with the rise of the rapidly rising heroin deaths. The third wave began in this country in 2013, but probably not here in New Mexico until around 2017, 2018, with fentanyl arriving in the illicit drug supply. And the characteristics of the fourth wave are the overdose crisis complicated by polysubstance use. So at the clinic I work at, Ideal Option, we drug test our patients on their first visit. And in New Mexico, about 60% test positive both for fentanyl and methamphetamine. And then we're increasingly seeing other contaminants such as novel benzodiazepines and xylazine. Right now, about 20% of our patients are testing positive for xylazine in New Mexico. I threw also on here the iron law of prohibition. This law states that essentially, you know, much as what happened when we prohibited alcohol, how that gave rise to cocktail culture. Suddenly, people were drinking gin, you know, there were distilleries. It was much more profitable to traffic concentrated liquors than beer or wine. And so this is what we're seeing with fentanyl, that, you know, heroin was an agricultural product. So you had to have fields, you had to have workers, you had to have seeds, you had to have good weather, you had to have people to harvest that, process it. Fentanyl can be made in someone's garage, right? There's none of that labor needed. It's much cheaper, it's much more condensed, easier to smuggle. So, yeah, so here we are. There are a couple of types of treatment that have been shown to be effective for fentanyl. One is buprenorphine. That's what we provide at Ideal Option, the clinic I work for. The unfortunate thing about trying to move somebody from fentanyl onto an FDA-approved drug like buprenorphine is that it has this sticky problem of precipitated withdrawal. Essentially, moving somebody from something like fentanyl, which is a full opioid agonist, to something like buprenorphine, which is what we call a partial agonist, results in this issue of really painful withdrawal. And so at Ideal Option, we have a few strategies to combat that, but it can be difficult. We're pretty good at it, but it can be difficult. Of course, methadone is available as well. Methadone has been the gold standard since its FDA approval for the treatment of opioid use disorder in 1972 and has no issues with precipitated withdrawal. However, it's not very accessible due to strict regulations, and it is actually, it doesn't have to be this way. It could be more accessible here, like it is in the UK or even India, Australia, or Germany. What we've come to understand about abstinence-based treatment, we've had many studies since methadone's approval in 1972 that treatment with medications for opioid use disorder were more effective than abstinence-based treatment. However, this recent study that came out in the Journal of the American Medical Association just this year shows that treating opioid use disorder without medications is actually more harmful to people than no treatment at all. So if we're going to get people into treatment, we need to be providing these medications, or it would actually be better if we just left them alone. So I think that's a really interesting study. It was done by Yale. It's a very good study. I have a citation if you'd like to read it. But I think this quote is great. There are plenty of studies that show that medication-based treatment is better than abstinence-based treatment. But now we can also say that patients are no better off getting abstinence-based treatment compared to no treatment at all. I just want to make the point that there are no inpatient facilities in southern New Mexico that utilize the FDA-approved medications for opioid use disorder, and I think that this is really hamstringing us. Xylazine, otherwise called trank, I just kind of want to talk about this complication. I don't like to end things on a negative note, so what can we do? First of all, we can make sure that all of our providers that are able to are using those FDA-approved medications, that we're treating opioid withdrawal early with liberal use of those medications to mitigate pain and discomfort, that we have greater access to methadone, which doesn't have those issues of precipitated withdrawal and is essential in the presence of fentanyl, that adjunctive medications are given along with buprenorphins to, you know, get people through that period of precipitated withdrawal, and that we have to look at our systems and how they work together. So I mentioned already the lack of inpatient facilities in New Mexico that accept New Mexico Medicaid that do not utilize these FDA-approved medications for opioid use disorder. Our skilled nursing facilities, none of them in the state, allow people to be on the FDA-approved medications for opioid use disorder, which really hampers us as far as people showing up with soft tissue infections or needing other types of care. And then hospital or emergency departments, only one of our hospitals in town both starts people on and continues people on medications for opioid use disorder if they land in the hospital. So if I'm somebody in recovery, I'm utilizing one of those medications, I'm doing well, and I land at one of the hospitals that doesn't use that, they're not going to continue me on it. I'm going to go through withdrawal, and then I'm probably going to leave against medical advice and not get my underlying issue treated. So we really need to meet people where they're at in this area. These are some entities in Las Cruces using these medications. Ideal Option, who I work for, Alt Recovery Group, one of our methadone clinics, Elite Methadone, Memorial Medical Center has a wonderful program called The Bridge, where anybody withdrawing from fentanyl or other opioids can go at any time and be immediately started on buprenorphine. The New Mexico Department of Health has a program. Mesia Valley Hospital is using it in their inpatient. They only have, you know, a short stay though, right? You can't stay there for 28 days. You can only stay there for a little while. And Peak as well is also utilizing these medications. So I just want to call all those partners out for their really great work. I do just want to make the point, since I do work for Ideal Option, that we are trying to provide solutions. We never run a waitlist. We take Medicaid. We take most commercial insurance. We have what's called a subscription plan for people with no insurance. And here's our referral number, 844-GO-IDEAL. We literally answer that phone 24 hours a day, seven days a week. You can call on Christmas Day. You know, we have a partnership with Las Cruces PD, where they're referring folks to us. So we will book the person for the next available appointment. Anybody working for any agency in town can utilize this number at any time. We have a peer support worker. She can help to find housing, help with food needs, you know, sign people up for Medicaid, all of that good stuff. So, you know, please take a picture or check our website. We're happy to help. So here's my citations. You're free to check my sources. Happy to send you a copy of the presentation, and here's my information if you'd like to get in touch with me. Thanks so much.
And thank you very much, Athena. By the way, yes, you can take pictures up here, but also sometime after tonight's meeting, you'll be able to see this whole presentation on the city's YouTube channel, so you can go back and review the whole thing. Next up, Kevin Renn, who is a retired Las Cruces police officer. He's now the Drug Intelligence Officer for HIDA, the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. Kevin?
Good evening, everybody. It's been a little while since I've been presenting here at City Hall. All right. As Dan said, my name is Kevin Renn. I am a retired police officer. I did about 28 years of law enforcement here in southern New Mexico, 21 years with the City of Las Cruces, and then I was at New Mexico State University for approximately seven years. I have been at New Mexico HIDA for approximately the last year, and I am the Drug Intelligence Officer for New Mexico HIDA, assigned to the Overdose Response Strategy. The Overdose Response Strategy is a program that is in every state around the country that's designed to get a partnership going between public health and public safety to figure out solutions to address the overdose problem that's hitting our country right now. What I'm going to talk about tonight is a little bit about the overdose problem in the United States versus the overdose problem in New Mexico, and then compare it with the overdose problem here in Las Cruces, Donaana County area. This chart right here is put out by the National Institute of Drug Abuse. It is, the last year is 2021, so it's a little bit dated, but as you can see, from 1999 to 2021, the overdoses in the United States significantly increased from, starting from down around 20,000 to, I think the last year was like 110 to 112,000, which is 2022, which is not on the map, or actually on the chart. If you look at this, it's going to talk about the states and the drug overdose mortality by state. The age, so these are rates in per 100,000 people. So a lot of the stuff I'm going to talk about tonight is going to be using that per 1,100 or per 100,000 people. But basically what it is, it's just a way to compare the drug problem in New Mexico versus the drug problem in, say, Chicago, or LA, or in a big, big community, because obviously there's going to be fewer overdose deaths in our smaller community than in those larger states. So it kind of puts it on the same playing field where we can see where we stand versus those other, other states and other, other locations. But if you look from the CDC, the most recent data is for 2022, and it shows that New Mexico has the eighth highest dead rate, or the eighth highest death rate in the United States at 47.2 deaths per 100,000 people. This chart right here is very similar to the, jump back here, we'll look at this one. So if you look at the, you know, the peaks and the change, or how it progresses over the years, this is the same thing, but it's converted to the per 100,000 standard, or the per 100,000 method of measuring it. And I like to look at it this way. The population of Las Cruces is about 100,000 people, right? So any year, how many people would die in Las Cruces, right? So if you look back, starting in 1990, New Mexico was at 7.6 people per 100,000. So in a typical year, 7.6 people would die in Las Cruces if Las Cruces was just what we were looking at, right? But this is the whole state of New Mexico. As you can see throughout, historically, New Mexico has been worse off than the rest of the country when it comes to overdose deaths. At some points, we're over-doubling, close to triple what the average is nationwide, which is really a scary thing. If you look to the most recent data, again, the national data is only available up to 2022, but we do have some New Mexico data up to 2023, and we're at 46.8 about, depending on where you look, and the national average is down around 31 to 32. So the problem in New Mexico is worse than in the rest of the country. There's even counties in New Mexico, if you look at Rio, Reba County, I think they're at, do you know the numbers, at like 80? 80 to 90 deaths per 100,000 in that county. So you think about it, it's, the problem in New Mexico is worse than in a lot of other places in the United States. This is the New Mexico version of, again, that first chart that we, that I put up there. It shows the number of deaths, but instead of using the per 100,000 number, those are, these are the actual numbers of deaths in our state. If you look again back, going back to 1991, 261 people died from overdose deaths. As you move forward in time, it progresses, it goes up, it dips a little bit, but then in 2021, it just went through the roof, like right after COVID. It has gone down a little bit since then, but it's still significantly higher than we were just five years ago. Part of what we do at the Overdose Response Strategy is we try to track what's going on. We have a partnership with the Office of Medical Investigator, which is basically the coroner's office for New Mexico. They do all the autopsies on overdoses, and they provide us with the information of what substances were, were involved on those overdose victims. As you can see, in 65, about 65% of the deaths, fentanyl was on board on the person that died of an overdose, followed right behind by methamphetamine, and then alcohol and ethanol was number three. But then it goes down from there, cocaine, benzos, benzodiazepines, and some of the other substances that Athena talked about already. This is a breakdown of the New Mexico deaths by age and sex. Blue is male, purple or pink is female. You can see that typically males die at, so out of every four deaths, typically three of them are males and one of them is a female. The most at-risk group that we're seeing, the overdose deaths, is the 35 to 44, and it just goes from there. But again, the, the numbers for New Mexico are very similar to what you see elsewhere in the United States. Here are the leading causes of death in the New Mexico. The most recent data that I could get was the 2022 numbers. I'm sure it's not a surprise, but if you look, heart disease and cancer are one and two, right? Followed by accidents. COVID is still up there at number four. But if you look at number seven, drug overdose deaths are the seventh leading cause of death for everyone in New Mexico. That's a scary number. Automobile accidents and homicides are not in the top 10, but I put them in there just kind of so we can have a reference, right? In New Mexico in 2022, 466 people died from automobile accident, but double that number died from overdose death, right? And if you look at homicides, it's 290. That's almost triple the number that died from a drug overdose. So it is, it's a severe problem that's affecting our, our communities. This is getting into the polysubstance use a little bit. Athena talked about it a little bit, but polysubstance is a, basically what polysubstance is, is somebody using more than one drug in their system. For the deaths in 2023, I was able to break it down and determine which substances were involved in the deaths. And if you look at the single substances involved, the high two are methamphetamine and fentanyl. If there's only one substance aboard, the person that passed away, followed by cocaine, and then heroin. When you get down into the multiple substances, the most common was fentanyl, methamphetamine, followed by fentanyl and alcohol, fentanyl, cocaine, meth, fentanyl and alcohol, and then meth and cocaine. Once you get down into three substances, it's, there's so many variations and combinations, but again, if, if there's three or more, three substances involved, fentanyl and meth and cocaine are the big, the big ones that are, that we're seeing a lot of people dying from. I got a slide from Ideal Options. So if you look at, so this is data from their annual report that's available online. If you look at what they're seeing for patients coming in for treatment, it's almost the exact same thing. Again, the breakdown of polysubstance use, one substance, two substances, three substances, and then more is almost exactly the same as, as what we're seeing in the people who die from overdoses. And then if you look at the substance used, it's, it's basically the same. The substances are, the high two are fentanyl and meth. A report that just came out last week, I wanted to throw that in there, something that a lot of people are not aware of, is there's, there's a mental health component of the overdose problem. There was a study produced by National Drug Early Warning System that shows the top counties in the state that have a overdose victim that didn't pass away, that, that expressed suicidal ideations. Three of the top 10 counties are New Mexico, and Donaana is one of them. A little bit about fentanyl. So fentanyl can be injected, snorted smoke, taken orally, pill or tablet. The most commonly seen fentanyl in, in our community at least, is the, the blue pills, the M30 pills, which are counterfeit oxycodone pills. They're, they're produced in Mexico and distributed throughout the country, but the way that they're used most commonly is taken orally, or they're smoked on a piece of tin foil, heated up on that tin foil in that picture, and the vapor, the smoke is inhaled with a straw. So if you see a piece of tin foil with a black stripe down the middle of it, somebody in that, somebody there is using fentanyl. It's also abused in the powdered form. It's starting to be seen a little bit no more in New Mexico in the powdered form. And another way that fentanyl is abused is, is fentanyl patches, which are medically prescribed, are abused by people who are, are using the, the fentanyl. We're going to look at the, the deaths in New Mexico. So this is the map of where the overdoses occurred. Part of what I do is enter this data into the, the system. We get the data from the Office of Medical Investigator. We put it into a, a mapping application where we can kind of see where it's going on and what, what the emerging trends are. And as you can see, in 2022, there was 997 fentanyl deaths, and then in 2023, we had 992. Oh, so let me back up, 997 in 2022 and 992 in 2023. So we're going to break it down into Donaana County. So if you look at the map, all the circles represent non-fatal overdoses, and all the diamonds represent a fatal overdose. As you can see, those are the, the stats for Donaana County. For 2023, there was 552 overdoses, 74 of which were fatal. And then so far, year-to-date for 2024, it shows 277 non-fadals and then 23 fatal overdoses. And of those 23 fatal overdoses, that's only the first quarter. So at, at the time when I created this presentation, I only had the first quarter data for, for Donaana County. So now we're going to zoom into the city of Las Cruces. As you can see, there is a bunch of overdoses all over the city. 77% of the overdoses in Donaana County occur within the city limits. As you can see, I've broken it down by city council district, but the bottom line is from 2022 to 2023, there was about a 13% increase. So nationwide, from 2022 to 2023, there was about a 13% decrease national, but a 13, about a 13, 12 to 13% decrease in overdose deaths, right? But when you look at the overdose deaths in New Mexico, and specifically in Donaana County, there was an 8.9% increase in overdose deaths. So while the rest of the country is trending kind of in the right direction, we're, we're going the wrong way. And that is all that I had. Again, my information is here on the screen. If you would like any additional information, or you'd like me to do a presentation to your organization, please contact me or my partner, Miranda Lopez, who is working out of Albuquerque office. I am down here in the Las Cruces office, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that
Thank you, Kevin. Next up is Special Agent in Charge for the Metro Narcotics Agency. That's Sergeant Gabe Ardenegus, and he also is a Las Cruces police officer. So here's Gabe.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to present to you all today. My name is Gabriel Ardenegus. I'm a sergeant with the Las Cruces Police Department, but I'm currently assigned to Metro Narcotics as the Special Agent in Charge. I'm going to go over a little bit about Metro Narcotics. A lot of people are not familiar with how it is organized and how it works, so I'll go over it here quickly. So the personnel at Metro Narcotics, we have three sergeants, one from the Las Cruces Police Department, one from Donaana Sheriff's Office, one from New Mexico State Police, and we work with 12 agents. The Police Department provides five agents. The Donaana Sheriff's Office also provides five agents. New Mexico State Police provides two. And we also have three FBI agents that sit at our task force. Right now, we're running on 10 agents due to vacancies, and starting tomorrow, we're going to be running on nine agents due to a promotion with State Police. We also have civilian staff over at Metro Narcotics, which is administrative assistants, who is provided by the Las Cruces Police Department and the City of Las Cruces, an evidence tech, which is provided by the Sheriff's Office, an accounting tech, and an equipment tech who are funded by HIDA. So what we do at Metro Narcotics, we run multiple different operations, and before I get into the operations that we, we conduct, a majority of the agents are 100% undercover. So one of our agents is a uniformed officer. He's a, also has a detection canine. So last year, or last year in 2023, we ran over 340 investigations. Our investigations include undercover operations, search warrants. search warrants, highway interdictions. We follow up on information. We do the call-out investigations for the Las Cruces Police Department and the Dona Anna Sheriff's Office. And we do a lot of surveillance operations. And then before I go into some of the statistics that we have had over the last five years, I want to show you some of our cases that we've had. And these are the most recent cases throughout the end of last year and this year. So not only do we investigate drugs, we do also dab into firearms. And we also help with the violent crime. We work together with our Criminal Investigation Division for the city of Las Cruces and for the Sheriff's Office. We try to help them out as much as we can as we are the ones pretty much in the shadows out there in these organizations or these groups. So we get a lot of information that we could provide to help them. So the two biggest drug threats in our area, obviously, we're talking about it today, is methamphetamine and fentanyl. Methamphetamine has been consistent as one of the biggest drug threats in the area, but with fentanyl and because of the overdoses, is rapidly increasing as, and catching up to methamphetamine. And they pretty much went over the substances. I'll go over it a little bit. They're highly addictive substances. Methamphetamine and fentanyl are complete opposite. Meth causes paranoia, anxiety, increases heart rate, and high doses may result in death from stroke, heart attack, or organ failure from overheating, so. So our investigations, so I went back to 2019. And the reason I went back to 2019 is that's when we started to see our fentanyl outbreak. So I included methamphetamine in this as well. So in 2019, we had two hundred and ninety-three cases we investigated. 2020, we had two hundred and eighty cases. 2021, two hundred and forty-nine cases. 2022, two hundred and fifty cases. 2023, a hundred and ninety-five cases. And this year, so far, we have investigated a hundred and forty-nine cases. Our seizures for the year in 2020, we seized seventy-five point one pounds of methamphetamine. 2021, a hundred and eighteen point nine pounds. 2022, seventy-one point five pounds. 2023, eighty-four pounds. And this year, year-to-date, we've already seized a hundred and seventy-five point two pounds of methamphetamine. And we'll go into fentanyl. It's a synthetic opioid. Causes relaxation, euphoria, pain relief, sedation, confusion, respiratory depression, which she got into, which causes overdose. The most common form of fentanyl that we see is the blue pill, the small blue pill. But what's concerning is this year, we're starting to seize powder. So it's becoming more available here. And this is an example of the fentanyl and how we seize it during our operations. Right here, it's seven hundred and twelve grams, so that's approximately seven thousand one hundred pills of fentanyl. This is the fentanyl in powder form. To the left is a brick of a powder of fentanyl. And to the right is something that we've encountered as of recent. It's called cement. So we're starting to see this form of fentanyl the way they're making it down in Mexico with the cartel. We're starting to see this cement product. And apparently, it's more predominant in El Paso, but once again, it's making its way up here. And our fentanyl investigation, so in 2019, we had three cases of fentanyl. 2020, we had seven cases. 2021, we had ninety-two cases. 2022, a hundred and seventy-four cases. 2023, a hundred and twenty cases. And year-to-date, we're at a hundred and twenty-eight cases of fentanyl investigated this year. So our seizures in 2020, I didn't have the statistics for seizures for 2019 available. So 2020, we seized four hundred and sixty-one pills, no powder. 2021, two twenty-two thousand six hundred and forty-six pills with no powder. 2022, we see sixty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-eight pills with no powder. 2023, we seized eighty-five thousand nine hundred and ten pills, no powder. This year so far, we've seized sixty-four thousand two hundred and nine pills. We also seized fifteen point eight pounds of fentanyl powder. And the information we're receiving with a pill press that will make approximately over five hundred thousand pills of fentanyl. And I combined our metro activities from 2021 to 2024, of course, to this quarter that we're in. We're almost at the end of the third quarter. We have one thousand two hundred and seven arrests. We've executed a hundred and seventy-eight search warrants. And we've conducted a hundred and seventeen operations, undercover operations within the task force. And one thing I'd like to make note that, we're a proactive task force and we target to investigate drug traffickers. Yeah, we do handle the possession cases for the county and the city, but the agents within the task force are tasked with investigating drug traffickers from your street dealer who's selling out of a hotel in West Picocho to sources of supply, sources of supply who are identified in Mexico. So our investigations are pretty broad. So that concludes my operation, or my presentation. Thank you.
And thank you, Gabe. Next, we're going to take some questions. So anybody who has questions, I'm going to walk up with a microphone. If we can, please limit the commentary you have so we can get to your actual question. And also, let's be courteous to one another and make sure to be succinct with the questions. And any of our speakers will be available to answer the questions. So I'll walk up and down this aisle here and talk to people. And you can ask anybody the question.
As Dan's doing that, I just want to thank our presenters again. I think that gives a really good understanding of kind of the history, what we're facing nationally, what we're facing here locally, and hopefully some information on things we can do to try to address the problems. So thank you to all three of our presenters.
Yes, let's start right here.
My name is Donna Striker. The reason I'm asking this question is we have a horrible problem, and I know we have an excess at the government, at the state level, billions of dollars. Why aren't we providing more? You wouldn't know this question necessarily, but what, why isn't the governor doing more to provide more support for you and all of the other agencies? Any idea?
Can you bring it to Athena?
Hey, Athena Huckabee, I think I can speak to that. So, you know, as a result of all of those pharmaceutical companies, right, that sort of started this whole thing, there's billions of dollars in opioid settlement funding that's coming down the pike. But that, the city of Las Cruces and Dona Anna County are set to get about twenty-five million dollars, which if you think about it, is a lot of money, but it's also not a lot of money. You know, the state also is getting money and everybody's sort of, I think, being really thoughtful about what to do with it because we don't want to use it to supplant existing funding. We want to fund new programs. I sit actually on the Opioid Settlement Advisory Council. So we're making plans for what to do with that. And I think that's definitely coming down the pike.
Thank you. Who's next? And one thing I forgot to mention, please mention your name.
Tim Dinkins here. Not so much of a question, but just a thank you to law enforcement and all the agencies that are working together. We as citizens understand that you guys leave your houses and your families, your wives and your children every day to fight for us and for our safety. It does not go unnoticed. You guys are in our prayers and you guys are our family. And we are here to fight and support you guys in every way. And thank you and God bless you all.
Thank you. Your name first?
I'm Frank Spillers. On any of your statistics in felonies and property damage and things like that, do you have statistics on how many of that were homeless people?
So that's a very difficult question because, first of all, it's the question of whether someone's homeless or not isn't always a yes or no. We've seen even recently with Officer Hernandez that some people have potentially a place that's provided to them and sometimes they stay there, sometimes they don't. They, they're on the streets. And so that's a difficult question by itself. And then it's obviously not a question we ask as part of any incident report, even when we make an arrest. We can obviously make some inferences, but it's not something that we track on a large scale. So all that to say, it's, I couldn't give an answer that I'd feel comfortable saying is accurate.
Thank you. Your name, please?
Hi, I'm Patty Hartman. And I feel like these town halls, we don't really get any information. And I know people think, oh, we got tons of information, but it's like these pieces of what you're doing. But what I want to see is like a comprehensive plan and strategies that connect what you guys are doing to the problems that we have with fentanyl. I haven't heard anything about that. I know we have the opioid settlement funds coming in. We have a ton of money from that. But how are we actually addressing the problem? First of all, how are we defining the problem as a drug problem? Who is impacted? Who's involved? I mean, all of these arrests and things, we want to see the results in terms of like less drug use in our area and less crime, higher quality of life. But we need the details, at least I do. And I'm never allowed to have conversations to hear the details. So how can we do that?
I'll say this real quick while, and then Athena has something. Part of the reason we're here is because this problem is such a large problem that you could throw, we could have all the money in the world and the money itself would not solve the problem. Us as a police department could do everything right and we still would not solve the problem. We're probably even put a big enough dent in the problem that I would even be happy with that. So everybody has to do their part. And there's still a lot of questions about what the best way to do it is. Obviously, there's different layers to this. You have the treatment, you have the intervention part, you have the harm reduction. And what I would say is all of them are important. We're already going to be here for two hours. So I can't, I wouldn't get anybody here if I said you're going to be here for five or six hours to work this out. Part of this is to generate conversation. Part of it is education. And if you have other questions, that's why we stay after, so that we can have one-on-one conversations and talk about, and then you can ask me specific questions. If I have an answer, I'll give them to you. If I don't, then maybe that's something that hopefully we can get or maybe it'll put us, point us in the right direction. But Athena had something real quick to add.
How about now? Okay, there we go. I just also wanted to say that I think I tried to make the case and if I didn't make it well, I apologize that the lack of evidence-based drug treatment in New Mexico is seriously lacking and that even somebody like me, with all of my knowledge, I mean, I have a master's degree, I do this work every day. A friend of mine called me on a Friday afternoon and had been smoking fentanyl pills and said she was ready for treatment. And I went and got her and I finally left her at the detox at midnight that night. I had to get her medically cleared. I had to, I mean, you know, it was a whole thing, right? For families to be able to know where the treatment is, know who provides the evidence-based treatment and spend, I mean, days and weeks of their lives, right, advocating for their loved ones, it's just such a, excuse me, a crappy situation, you know? And I would really like to see a lot more evidence-based drug treatment, a lot more low-barrier treatment. You know, let's make it easier for people to get treatment than to call the dealer and have him deliver.
Let me just repeat the question so people can hear. She's asking if there's a list of all the services, treatment options, all the providers. Go ahead.
For sure. There's, you know, several resource lists and I think I have your email, so I can point you toward those lists. I mean, but the list doesn't solve the problem, right? I think is what you're saying.
Oh, sorry. The list tells us what we need to focus on in terms of a plan.
Sure.
That's the details I was asking, so.
Yeah, and I'll just say, I mean, there's a lot of those plans out there. There's the sequential intercept model, which kind of covers substance use and mental illness and where the gaps are, specific to the criminal justice system. There's a lot of people that have put a lot of time into trying to figure out where we're at and where to go from here. And I don't think we have all the answers, but we're also not at square one. We're kind of along, somewhere along the path.
And I think you have something to add directly to this?
Yeah, if you don't mind. My name's Ned Rubin. I'm involved with a group here along with Athena and I'm with other folks here called Resilience Leaders. The question that this woman asked is really, I mean, all the things we've talked about today are on the back end of the problem. The first question we should be asking is why is there such a huge market here for these drugs? And that's one of the things that we've been trying to address. It has to do with a lot of complicated things that I'm sure the chief and the others of us are aware of. It has to do with trauma. It has to do with how people are brought up. It has to do with all kinds of family issues. This group, along with others, is trying to begin to address some of that. But as you know, it's extremely complicated and difficult to address. And you're right, you can throw money at this, but money isn't enough. We have to figure out ways to intervene in the systems that are working here, not just treatment, but all kinds of other stuff, medical, housing, food, all this kind of stuff affects how people make choices in their life. One of the choices they make is to use drugs. So without going into more detail.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, but the affordability of fentanyl also plays a role in this. Is that right?
Well, it's supply and demand. And there is a lot of demand, but there's also a lot of supply. So it's relatively inexpensive, which doesn't necessarily help the situation.
Okay, let's go over here. Name first?
Good evening. My name is Pata Costa and I did see some statistics on the overdoses, but I'm wanting to know if you have specific data with youth ages twelve to seventeen. I work for the Youth Development and Diversion Program. And what we've seen in the last two years that I've been here were overdoses of edibles with young kids, as young as the middle school. I live in El Paso, but I worked in Cruces for fifteen years. And I can tell you, we're starting to see cases in El Paso in the barrio that I live, segundo barrio. And I know it's a matter of, you know, we're city sisters, so it's coming down, trickling this way. And about a month ago, I got to go to Juarez and see a fentanyl Christian-based rehab center and it was just something that I've never seen. And I've been doing drug work and youth work for over forty years. And let me tell you, this fentanyl thing is just something else. So I would be interested in data for youth.
Yeah, I don't have those numbers with me, but I can tell you Lieutenant Wheelo sitting back there is our school resource officer. She's over the sergeant in charge of school resource officers. And they have seen, they've seen that as an issue in our schools, at least to some degree.
Okay, name first?
Hi, I'm Olivia Johnston. And as we look at this problem, what I would like to know fundamentally is where fentanyl and meth is coming from. Because before we can attack the problem, we need to know where the problem is coming from. Do we have any information on that?
Yeah, and HIDA actually puts out a lot of that information. I'll let Sergeant Ardenivas respond to that.
So a lot of the fentanyl that we see is coming directly from the southern border, whether it's coming from the Arizona southern border from the Phoenix area or straight down from Juarez. But that's a majority of our seizures. Those are the two locations. And the only one thing in common is the one coming from Phoenix is crossing the border in Arizona. The one we're getting here in New Mexico is crossing the border here in New Mexico.
Okay, name first?
Hi, I'm Dana Hopkins. And actually, Athena and I are having this conversation already,[1710.33] but I would love to know more about how we can access harm reduction for all of us, because within our circles, within people we mentor, et cetera, we know this stuff is happening. We know that dual diagnosis is real. So we get people with mental health stuff who are also using. And if, when we're talking about overdose, I think more people having access to Narcan and understanding how to use it, and how to implement harm reduction safely. So whatever anybody could address about that, so that it'd be, I personally would love to see every single person carrying Narcan, knowing how to use it. I have used Narcan on a city bus, and I have dispensed it to young folks. And it keeps people alive, and we can hope that at some point, they are in recovery. But we would like to keep them alive while they do that.
And the police department side, I could just answer that obviously all of our officers carry Narcan. And I don't know, Athena wants to address it at a larger scale?
Yeah, thanks for bringing that forward. Yeah, the state of New Mexico is mandated to do harm reduction services. We have a state law about it, as well as the law requiring law enforcement to carry Narcan. And I know Las Cruces PD has saved many lives because I got all of those reports of the records of use when, you know, I was doing that for the county. So people can access naloxone through the Donaiana County program. They provide it free to anybody that would like it. It's also free at Department of Health, free at all of their partners. There are harm reduction sites at Alianza, at Amador Health Center, at New Mexico Department of Health. And I'm harm reduction certified, if you'd like to learn more about it, if you'd like to access Narcan. I am the Southwest hub, so I just did trainings all day on Tuesday in Luna County with the Deming Police Department, the public, the, sorry, District Attorney's Office. I did a training in Columbus. I'm going to Reserve at the end of the month, so I'm really dedicated to making sure that everybody that wants Narcan has it.
Thank you. Questions? Let's come right back here. Name first?
Eugenia Gina Montoya-Ortega. So I kind of heard, like, education. The other day, I was at the Dollar Tree, and there was a little booth that actually had DARE, where they're trying to get funding to do this program. Do we still have these in the schools? Because my children, my older ones are in their late 30s, early 40s, and I had my son go to a liquor store with my sister and turn around and tell her, "Oh, my gosh, you're doing drugs." And I don't hear the kids saying that. So are we starting, are we still continuing the education that, like, my children got in school? Because I think that's where the education needs to start, is to making them aware that, you know, drugs are not good for us.
Yeah, thank you, Gina. We still do education, especially in our schools. Our school resource officers do a lot of different presentations. As far as the DARE program specifically, there's a lot of data about how ineffective the DARE programs were. And so, you know, we haven't continued something that, there's, it's not just one study or two studies, but multiple studies have shown that it wasn't effective, especially for the investment. So I think there's, it's not that education's not important and effective as part of prevention work, but we just have to do it differently than we were doing it.
Okay, let's come up here to the front. And name first?
Shawna Pfeiffer. I don't really want to introduce some strife here, but I would be very interested in Athena's take on some of the state laws that we might be interested in looking at for the state legislature to pass, hopefully during the regular session next year, in relation to the fentanyl crisis, i.e. competency bail reform, et cetera.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that introduces too much strife. You know, Chief and I have talked a lot about the competency issues, you know, and the fact that even when people are found not to be competent, they, the services are not available, right? Chief, I believe you told me that of the folks that you tried to refer for treatment guardians, that the, many of the organizations that employ the treatment guardians refuse to take the cases, right? So even with the laws we have in place, right, if we don't have the services and the people willing to take that on, that's not going to work. So I think it's, and I think as to the rest of it, I probably don't have too much of an informed decision, or, you know, something to say about it. I've been working a lot on the alcohol tax, wanting to, working with the AHA Coalition. They're interested in increasing the alcohol tax and putting that money into treatment-related services. New Mexico hasn't had our tax increase in alcohol since 1996, and it's some of the lowest in the country. So that's something that I've been talking a lot about. But yeah, I'm sure we could find common ground there, actually.
And Chief, do you have anything to add on to that?
I've talked a lot about competency, and I'll continue to talk about it, but I don't want to take up the time here.
Questions? How about in the back? Hold on.
Sorry, sorry, it sounds just about ten years.
You're good, sir.
Okay, name first?
Sure. Robert Maitland. So, so we were broken into at the end of July. It would have been felony burglary charges if the person was caught. I called today on the case, and it's already been closed, stating no evidence. Our camera was knocked down, our motion lights were busted, they partied in our garage, destroyed our property, and walked out with a whole lot of tools down Amador on a moving dolly. You know, I just don't get it. You know, the lights are required, the motion lights are required, and nothing is done about it. So...
So, and I'm sorry that happened to you, sir. When it comes to the cases that are assigned, and at the end of this, if you want to stick around and talk to one of the deputy chiefs, we can get information about your specific incident, just make sure that there wasn't something that made it assignable. But on a case, if we don't have enough to pursue, we don't have fingerprints, we don't have video, we don't have something to make it solvable, then we have to put the resources into the cases that are solvable. And so it becomes, it becomes basically prioritization. And then also, yeah, when we get fingerprints, we send them for processing. We're working on a solution to where we can do that in-house, because that will drastically speed up how fast we get fingerprints back, and hopefully increase the amount of cases we solve and how fast we solve them. So we can get better there, for sure.
Name first?
James Thomas Floyd. Chief, do you think the negligence of the governor to take the issues along our southern border with Mexico, with leaving them wide open, has caused a mass influx? You know, here in Donaiana County, in this year alone, we've averaged 7,000 migrants through our two migrant shelters here in town. Do you think that's caused an influx in crime, break-ins, drug flowage? And one more thing about where the drugs are actually coming from, we know they're coming from Mexico, but I think the audience should know that they're from China, the ingredients are sent to the cartels from China. This is something we've known for years. How are we going to target of securing our border to give Donaiana County and our cities some breathing room to even start to grasp on this? Because these numbers are beyond normal of anywhere in the country. You know, I think we're talking about our health, we need to get that under wraps, but we need to set standards for the rest of the country, of how we're going to handle the homeless situation, how we're going to handle what it's like being a border county. Those numbers are beyond, and it starts in 2020 and just keeps climbing, but it's a direct attack from another country, and it is destroying our community apart. There's not a single day that I don't wake up and there's fresh fentanyl flowing down the street. You know, ants will cover it, anybody's dog that licks it, it's death, let alone it being a child playing in the rocks.
So, thank you for the softball question. Obviously, the precursor chemicals generally do come from China to Mexico. It's produced in Mexico, either powder or pill form, and comes up here. What I will say is, obviously, there's way too much fentanyl here. And so, do we need to stem the flow of fentanyl coming into this country? Yes. That's something that's above my pay grade. I have to focus on the problems I can influence, and there's a lot of things that I wish I could directly influence at the local, state, and federal level, but I can't. The other thing I'll say is, to just illustrate how much availability there is for fentanyl compared to when I was a young officer, which wasn't that long ago, with heroin. You know, I would see heroin a handful of times a year, and I wasn't a very good drug officer, I will preface it with that, but even when I worked as part of the gang unit, which dealt with drugs to some degree, I didn't see it all the time. Now it's very common for our young officers, rookie officers, to encounter fentanyl or fentanyl paraphernalia every single day. It's just very different from when I started and what we're seeing. And so, yes, do we need to alter the flow into this country of fentanyl? That's a part of it. That alone will not still solve our problem, but that is a big part of it, yes.
And with the chief talking about heroin, if I can compare statistics of when we had a, before fentanyl, our heroin seizures or cases were probably half to a third of what we do with fentanyl. So that's the comparison of when fentanyl took over for heroin.
Yeah, it's everywhere, unfortunately.
My name is Harry Stryker. I have a question for the sergeant. If you seize those thousands and thousands of pills, what would you estimate you're not able to seize, not because of ineptitude, just because of the overwhelming amount of those pills and the drugs coming in across the border or wherever they come from?
I can't answer that question, because it's just everywhere. For me to answer that question, I would be lying to you, you know? Because it seems like everybody that has meth lately has a handful of pills. So it's real hard to answer that question, I'm sorry.
How about more questions? Anybody else this side? Anybody? Okay, thank you. Do we have somebody?
While I was walking over there, obviously, we'll, just like we normally do, we'll stay back after we end this for any one-on-one conversations or questions you have.
Hey there. Johnny Coker with KRWG Public Media. Thank you all for hosting this. Thank you, Chief Story. This question, I have two, one question for Athena and one for the chief, they're both in the same vein. You're part of the Opioid Settlement Advisory Council, Athena. You know, y'all meet on a somewhat regular basis. What have you, what have been your main takeaways from those meetings about what those opioid settlement funds should be used for? And Chief Story, in terms of those opioid settlement funds, do you have any idea of what you'd like to see it used for? And have you had conversations with other city leadership in terms of what these funds can be used for?
Go ahead, Athena, you can go first.
Thanks. Athena Huckabee. So it's pretty clear that they've put a lot of protections around those funds. They don't want these funds to end up doing the same thing that tobacco settlement funds did, which is filling potholes, right? So they, that money cannot be put into the general fund, and it needs to be spent specifically on opioid remediation. There's also a clause that if the money is not spent on opioid remediation, that communities can be subject to audit, and that money can be clawed back. So I think one of the things that we're really trying to do, and I understand why people probably think we are moving maybe too slowly, but we don't want to run amok of any of that, right? We want to make sure that we're spending the money as it legally is required to be spent, and that we're not going to end up in a situation where that money is taken back from our community.
Yeah, so there, so Crimson Research with NMSU was tasked with gathering all the data and kind of compiling a report. I believe that draft report just barely went out this month. And so now the next step is to take that report and actually come up with formal recommendations to give to city council and the county commission. My, so my take on it, we've been involved in the process, so I've had those conversations with city leadership that's tasked with it, as well as Jimmy Michael at the county and the different work groups. My fear is, it's, it sounds like a lot of money, but it's not a lot of money, like Athena said. So if we try to do too many things with it, we're going to end up accomplishing nothing. So whatever we decide to do, we're going to have to really focus it on trying to accomplish something with it. The state is also spending a lot of money from their settlement funds. And so what we don't want to do is duplicate efforts, which I think that's one of the problems we have here, is we duplicate some efforts, and then we have a lot of gaps in services in other areas. And so I'd like to use the money to fill the gaps, and not duplicate efforts of the state or what's already happening here.
Okay, we have another question up here, I think. You have one back there? No? Okay, here you go.
I don't, you know, I don't know everything, but one thing I do is learn about what's going on, so that I'm kind of informed. And what I, and I have done a lot of research on these opioid settlement funds, and I know it is supposed to be a community-driven process for spending this money, which means the people out on the front lines who have lost people, who have died from overdoses, and I don't see any of that. I see what I always see here, which is the powers that be decide for us, without even learning from us, meaning us, the people, the people with the problem. And I kind of resent that. I feel a little bit oppressed in terms of community-driven programs.
Yeah, I think Athena obviously can answer that better than me, but that's not true as far as no involvement from people. Dan, can you give it to Athena real quick? There's been a lot of different work groups, including people of, basically anybody who's a stakeholder at all has been included. Go ahead.
Yeah, we had, you know, we did do focus groups, but I think that the thing that's more, more clear, that I think Patty will speak to you, is that we actually went out and did street surveys. Myself, Robert Maitland, many other individuals working with the group. I went out all day in the heat. I bought some burritos from Taco Bell. We had $10 Walmart gift cards. I went to all of the population. I was at the bus stop on El Paseo. I was up and down Picacho. I was at the Walmarts. I was, you know, running around and asking people, "Do you have a few minutes to talk to me about the problems you're experiencing, how you think this money might be best spent?" And I think what you'll really like is people had, like, the most amazing answers. People know exactly. You know, they talked about things like having peer support workers out in the field doing outreach, you know, so that they don't have to go to the place. They want us to come to them. They talked about, they didn't realize they were talking about this, but they talked about things like contingency management, where we essentially reward people for having good behavior. One guy said to me, "I think they should give people prizes for staying sober." And I said, "That's a thing. That's contingency management. That's like a real thing." So it was, I mean, those are just two examples, but it was really... I think that we took that information about what they wanted, that's included in the report, and that's something I'm really committed to. As a person in recovery myself, it was important that we talked to people, not in recovery, but people in active use. Unfortunately, sometimes people in active use, their lives are too chaotic to show up at meetings and, you know, especially when we, I mean, it's not very, very friendly of a process, right? And I think we could actually do a lot more to have people be personally involved, but I just want you to know that that was very important to me, and I took a big initiative to do that and include those voices.
About any other questions? A reminder, and I think Chief will mention this, Chief, and all of our speakers will be hanging around for a little bit. If you want a one-on-one, come on down and talk to them.
And I just want to end by saying thank you to everybody that came, that took your night to be here, regardless of where you fall on any of these issues. And thank you again to our speakers. I think, I thought it was good education in a short period of time to give you a pretty good grasp of what we're facing. So, thank you all.
And, yes. And by the way, keep an eye on our Facebook page. Be looking at news stories, because we'll have another town hall in the next, what, four months, maybe? The end of the year. Yeah, thank you.